All right, thank you ladies and gentlemen for being here this evening. Thanks for being patient. So we're going to do two types of presentations here. Elliot Dr. Faith is going to do for the county, a short slideshow. And I've asked the developer and the contractor to kind of come in and do a really nice presentation, to kind of show what their projection of this property is going to be. And then afterwards, we're going to take any questions on the property. And if we have time, any other questions you may have. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce Dr. Faith from Queen Anne's County.
Good. Well greetings and welcome to the Graysonville Community Center. It really is a pleasure to be here out in the community. I am the Director of Community Affairs with the unique umbrella of tourism, the TV. Thanks, we have Georgia and Mike here with us from the TV station. And then we also have public information. So one of the key roles that this department has is to outreach to the community. And when you signed in, one of the things that I asked you to tell me was, how did you find out about this meeting? Because we reached out through all of the avenues that we normally would. But it's important that we understand how you want to hear from the county. Because we want to be able to share opportunities like this, or opportunities for events, or public information with you. And we just need to know how to do that. So I really do appreciate your helping me help you through that process. As we indicated before, it's going to be a presentation after this as it relates to the project. And Tom Davis with Davis Moore &amp; Sharon will be taking the lead on that presentation. Do we have a clicker, or am I clicking?
Yes.
Do we have a clicker, or am I clicking?
He wasn't.
Oh, cool. All right. Okay, as I mentioned before, we reached out in the ways that we normally would. It's on QAC-TV, which is on Atlantic Broadband, Channel 7. Or you can see anything that's on QAC-TV on the website. You can also pick and choose at that point in time how you would like to, or what you would like to view. It's on QAC.org. We put it out through print, which means newspaper and flyers. We also went out on social media through Facebook, Twitter. And then email. If we have your email address and you've provided that to us tonight, then we will use that to reach out. We'll use it judiciously, as we don't want you to get inundated with emails from the county and then go, "Please stop." And then we wouldn't know that. So we will, we do try and use them in a limited way, but especially when we think they're important. We also put it out through a chamber email newsflash. They have essentially an email blast that they put out. And a lot of people have told us in the past that they do view those. So that was the other way. And then word of mouth. And I think that the community has really risen to the occasion at this point in time. And many of you heard about it through word of mouth. If you have any questions, you can call 410-758-4418. Or email us at welcome@qac.org. Thank you. Tom?
Good evening. My name's Tom Davis, professional engineer with DMS &amp; Associates. My business partner Kevin Sharon, also a professional engineer. We have the owner developers here, Neelis Patel, Chris Patel, and Gary Patel. To give you a little bit of background, the Patel family had owned the Sleep-In Hotel, which is immediately adjacent to this development site, and sold that recently. And are looking to reinvest in the community to develop this restaurant park next door, which will be, well we feel is a very good fit with the hotel and other uses in the area. So we're showing this as a Denny's, but there's actually two restaurant pads on the project proposed. My clients have a letter of intent with a franchisee to develop the Denny's restaurant. The other restaurant pad is unnamed at this time. The subject site is immediately adjacent to the west of the Sleep-In Hotel. Kevin will flip the next one. It's a triangular shaped piece of property that has access off of VFW via panhandle right-of-way. You can see the, go back to that, yeah. You can see the pool and the sleep-in. It's kind of hard to see. So it's basically a triangular shaped piece of property that was cleared of. It's woodlands probably 15, 20 years ago. And the only improvements on the property are two large billboards, which would have to be removed as a result of this development. This is just our conceptual site plan. We have gone through the county process for a conceptual plan approval. And the concept was reviewed and conditionally approved last month, I believe, by the Planning Commission. And this is just zoning information that's required by the county development review process. A lot of technical data on there that gives you the acreage of the site, which is approximately 3.6 acres. Parking calculations, and so on and so forth. This is an existing conditions plan, again showing the sleep-in property to the right and the triangular shaped piece of property to the left there. Again, we're looking at, we're calling this a Denny's project, but it is a restaurant complex that my clients are proposing. Again, Denny's is definitely moving forward. And they're working to work out all the logistics with the architect and the franchise about particulars of the site development and the building. Again, this is the property. It's about 3.6 acres. There's basically little friends of woodlands around the edge of the property there. We're trying to preserve that as a buffer and to meet the county requirements for forest protection. There are some non-tidal wetlands and a drainage ditch that kind of bisects the property from the sleep-in and the VFW property. It's in the brown there. And it's basically a drainage ditch from Route 50 drainage. There's a small portion of floodplain that comes up from the headwaters of Winchester Creek, and it's a dotted line. All the new development, as you'll see in a minute, will be outside of that floodplain limits. The resources, the natural resources on the property are very limited. And the conceptual plan that we've developed pretty much meets all the county resource protection standards. The site is also located in what's called the critical areas. And essentially, the critical areas is a 1,000-foot distance from the headwaters of Winchester Creek. The shaded area to the north side of the site and part of the sleep-in site are in the critical area. The site is designated as intensely development, which is the most intense land use development designation for critical area properties. So there's no environmental issues with the site with respect to critical areas. This is our land plan that has been reviewed by the county planning staff. Essentially, the access to the property will be coming through the panhandle there between the VFW property and the rear of the sleep-in. Opens up into a parking lot with parking that meets the county code. And then the two restaurant pads are shown here in green. The Denny's is the one to the east closest to the sleep-in. The other restaurant pad, we don't have a particular user. Our client's intent is to build the project, develop that pad area, have utilities, electric, water, sewer, et cetera, and try to market it to another restaurant user. As again, right now, the Denny's is the only given for the project. As part of the development review process and state law, we have to address stormwater management requirements. These green areas show the areas of the stormwater management systems that would be installed in there, what's called environmentally sensitive design. Try to mimic the site back into woodland conditions. And these will all be designed as part of our site development plans as we move forward with the project. This is a conceptual landscape plan, which is also over here on a board. Just showing you the landscape buffering on the property, landscaping within the parking lot, and other shrubbery, et cetera. This is a picture of the current prototype of the Denny's restaurant that would be proposed here. We're still working with the planning staff on the architectural features of the building. But this is the Denny's new prototype. These are actual pictures of one that's been constructed somewhere down south. Again, this is, we're showing this as Denny's, but it is a two-restaurant pad site. Where we are in the development review process, we did obtain conceptual plan approval from the county planning commission in January. We're now working through a comprehensive water and sewer plan amendment with the county commissioners to extend public water to the site, which exists on this side of Route 50. We'll have to extend it all the way to the north side of Route 50. The second plan over here that I have on the board shows the routes of the public water main that we're considering. We're still in engineering studies with respect to that. We have followed what's called an adequate public facility study, which addresses sewer and water capabilities of existing county facilities, and also road and traffic impacts. And right now, that that study is in review with the county planning and zoning staff. We do not see any issues with any of the public facilities to accommodate either of these restaurants. And the intent would be, once we obtain the approval for the public water extension, that we would move forward with what's called a site plan review process, which is where we develop the design of the onsite utilities, detailed drainage, specifications for construction, landscaping design, and so on. So that's about all I have. I'd be glad to answer any questions. I believe Faith was going to get a list. Where are you, Faith? Do you have any written?
You know, the written, the written questions are really just on any subject.
Oh, okay.
We're going to show the 3D video.
Okay. All right. The county planning staff and GIS staff put together a little, took the information that we provided to them and created a 3D model, which is kind of interesting. Kind of shows it from different perspectives, from Route 50, VFW Road, the access coming in. So it's kind of interesting. Way above my head. So this would be a view from overhead of the open field across Route 50 from the site, looking down on the unnamed restaurant and the Denny's to the right corner now. Panning around over the wooded area, looking down upon the site. Sleep-In in the background. There's a shot of Graysonville there on the other side, on the south side of 50. As you're coming around the wooded area there, you can see the rear views of the site. This would be the Denny's there, the brown building on the left, and the unnamed restaurant there coming into view now. And then there's the VFW facility coming into play on the lower part of the screen. And this is, this would be a view from VFW Road, looking in at our access road. And then the sleep-in hotel there on the bottom left, parking lot of the sleep-in. Route 50 there coming into the DMS logo. So this is coming into the property, turning left off of VFW Road. That's the trash corral, the backside of the Denny's. Kind of panning around there, looking at the landscaping that would be proposed and the screening for the trash corral. You're turning into the parking lot, getting ready to get your cup of coffee right about These landscape islands would be installed with bio-retention and stormwater systems, similar to the ER stormwater systems up here at Nesbit Road. This is going eastbound towards Ocean City or Queenstown, depending on if you're local Coming westbound from Queenstown to the site would be on your right. So I believe that concludes our presentation for the materials and what have you. So I'd be glad to answer any questions, either the county representatives or myself. Yes ma'am, Miss Pat?
Signage going to be?
It'd be out on Route 50.
Can you repeat the question?
Miss asks where the signage would be. The county code allows freestanding sign, and as well as wall signage, they call it. So the signage would be out on the Route 50 corridor. There's certain limitations on size of the sign. I believe it's 150 square foot. And depending on where the sign is located relative to the right-of-way, it has, it's restricted on height. Each of the uses would be allowed, also a wall sign, which is mounted to the facia of the building. Yes ma'am? Yes ma'am?
Is it going to be 24 hours?
I assume so.
Yes. You talked about extending the public water. Who would be paying for that?
Those guys right there. The Patels, the developers. There may be some participation by the county, but we're working with the county to potentially obtain some funds.
Can I kind of ask, how did we come up with a Denny's? New, you have an opportunity to get any restaurant that you want.
Nobody wants to.
They're the only ones that have taken the offer of my client's property at this point.
How many parking spaces for the two restaurants?
I believe it's about 130.
Talk about satellite parking?
The sleep-in hotel was originally designed by Mr. Walt Thompson, the previous owner, for a small restaurant pad on the front right. So that parking lot is actually overbuilt for the actual number of rooms at the hotel. So our clients, when they sold the sleep-in to the current owners, reserved a right-of-way access to utilize some of those spaces there. Furthermore, we think that the two uses will be compatible, such that some of the people staying at the sleep-in will not have to drive. They'll be able to walk across a pedestrian link that I forgot to mention. We're going to create a pedestrian link between the two sites. So it's most likely, some of the people staying at the sleep-in would not drive to the adjacent parking lot.
One more question. Apparently, many properties are allowed to park in the area that you're approaching the rest of the restaurant.
The county had--
Complaining--
I'm sorry.
Where is it complaining that the trucks will be parked?
We actually had designated in the back part of our site, a larger, wider area for RVs and trucks to park. It's, the county addressed that concern, and we've allowed for some space on the back of the site. You'd have to come up and take a look at it in detail.
Trucks are named the motel. Will they be allowed to park there?
I guess I'm not understanding your question.
Large trucks that will stay at the motel. And they park along the side of VFW, and they park on your entrance. Where are they going to go?
Not sure.
That's a good question. So I have a question that was asked of me today. If I'm going to the Denny's and I'm going westbound, how do I get to the Denny's? Is it going to be a pull-off, kind of like where the Royal Farms is? Or do you have to pull off where the road to go behind sleep-in?
You came right off of Royal Farms.
I mean, Denny's, sorry. Got Royal Farm on my mind. How would I get to the Denny's?
If I'm going, if I'm going westbound?
Yes.
If I'm going westbound, I'm already, I can make the exit off of VFW Road, come off the off-ramp, and turn left into the site.
That's right. There's not-- Be an exit on 50 to go to Denny's. You're going to have to go off where--
That's great. Yeah. Yeah. If you're going eastbound, I'm not sure how you get there.
Chester River.
I'm just kidding. Yes, sir.
The ditch in front there-- And VFW truck, and how many of that road comes in going in?
The access road going in will be at least 24-foot wide that accommodates two-way traffic. The ditch will be maintained. There's already a culvert crossing across the ditch where that panhandle comes in off of VFW Road. So that existing ditch will be maintained. There's actually a 30-foot right-of-way between the sleep-in property and the VFW property that belongs to this property. If you look at that site plan, you can kind of see it. We'll try to get back up the image that shows that. And again, this is at the conceptual level. We'll be starting to work on our engineering here shortly, and addressing some of the concerns that have been talked about as far as drainage. The county planning office was concerned about large vehicle parking, and we did identify an area back on the north part of the site for trucks to come in and get out of the way. To answer the question about what happens with the trucks at the sleep-in, not sure. I guess the sleep-in owners will have to deal with that. Roy?
Over the course of my 40-year food service career, I dealt with a lot of Denny's, and most of them had a meeting room within them. Does the new concept, Denny's, have a meeting room available?
I do not believe so.
I'm sorry?
I don't think so. Whether Denny's new model has a meeting room in them, and I don't think that they do. The floor plan I saw was just seats.
What they call a family room? Like kids' room.
They have a family room that's, I guess for large events, yeah. But it's not a meeting room.
It's not a meeting room, no.
I think they were coming to the stack meeting. I think it was to be presented, and it was postponed. Was there a reason?
Not that I'm aware of.
They were on the agenda at one point. And it's postponed.
For the county commissioners or the planning and zoning?
Planning.
Not sure about that. I mean, unless it was put on by air, by staff, and we weren't ready to come and resubmit.
How long will it take to do all the engineering?
They wanted me to do it in about a month. It's probably going to take two to three months. The whole process, we're probably another six or seven months of process from now. Take this guy's question. Yes, sir.
What discussions have you had in Fort Worth? Have you given to bicycle access to the property and bicycle racks at the restaurant?
The planning staff commented on that, and we did identify a path. It's kind of hard to see, but it would be on the south side of the entranceway coming in with paths that lead into the site. And I believe on the detailed plans, we have bike racks for bikers on this site.
I know you have to go. Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Just to clarify where the trucks will enter, will they be doing the same roadway in between the sleep-in and the VFW? Or is there another roadway?
There's only the access panhandle between the sleep-in site and the VFW.
There won't be sufficient room for those trucks?
We're working on the design. We'll address turning radiuses, and you know, if we need to, we'll put mountable curb out there. But the Department of Public Works had already expressed concern, and you know, we got to get into some technical details as we engineer the site. Right now, it's conceptual. Yes, ma'am?
What's the proposed completion date for everything built out?
April of next year.
April of next year. If everything works right.
Depends on the county.
Do you have any other questions?
This is y'all's opportunity. Please speak up.
Yes, sir.
Has the VFW made any comment regarding some of the activities they hold, and if that would impact--
I have not heard any, anything from the members of the VFW. We are required by the county code to send out notifications of the project, which we did. But we have not heard from any of those members.
Were there any issues when the sleep-in was there, since these gentlemen familiar with--
No, not that I'm aware of.
We've been supporting the VFW in the last 10 years.
If you want to come up and take a look at the plans, it might be easier to see some of the detail for the color rendering there. That's our colored landscape plan. And then the other drawing on the easel is the actual conceptual routes for the public water extensions to the site. Yes, ma'am?
So the target completion date that was mentioned was just for the Denny's, not the--
The intent would be to build the Denny's, and then a majority of the parking lot, and then create a pad area. But if in the meantime, as they're going through this process, they secure another franchisee or a user, then it would be built concurrently.
Is there a mystery about that? Or is it just that they haven't--
They don't have a user. We basically pulled, the footprint of that building, we pulled off the internet randomly of a restaurant of around 6,500 square foot, and laid our site out. Yes, ma'am?
Instead of a restaurant, would they consider doing something recreational? Bowling alley?
Based on my experience doing engineering in the county, there's, the demand for those is, can't be supported by the county population, based on what I hear. I've been doing this engineering for 30 years, and a bowling alley was considered on Thompson Creek Shopping Center, and it's never happened. So--
Build it, Bill.
You got any money?
Is there available leases, anybody who would like to build it?
Sounds like you got a buyer there, Gary.
Send the checkbook.
Movie theater.
Yes, yes.
That'd be nice.
No parking.
Site's too small. Okay.
Or we scrap the Denny's and start over, don't we?
Any particular questions about the Denny's?
About the Denny's.
Or the restaurant?
It looks like at the 3.6 acres, how many is going to be now covered with parking lots?
The county code allows 80% coverage, and I think we're probably 10 to 15% below that right now.
So what would it say, 2.5 acres?
I don't know. I don't have much, I can't do math in my head. I need a calculator.
Two and a half acres.
It's on one of these plans I could pull out and--
How close is it up, so I can't tell by the plans? Is it to that seasonal community behind them, sort of by that creek? No, that's way down. Is it way down? No.
There's no community nearby.
The area to the immediate left of the triangle is totally wooded. You got the VFW. You can see the concrete parking lot, the pavilion, and the actual VFW post, and then the sleep-in and its parking lot. So pretty much all the development will be adjacent to either the institutional use of the VFW or the sleep-in.
Will the sleep-in stay as it is? Are there any plans to change that pad at all?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. So no more questions pertaining to the Denny's project for the county, perhaps? Any other issues? Yes, ma'am?
This has, my question's about the liquor laws.
Your question is about the liquor laws?
Liquor laws.
Okay.
Is there something that is keeping us from having a chain restaurant in this area that serves liquor?
Absolutely. I have a gentleman that I'd like to come up and speak to that man. Thank you for asking that question. This gets brought up constantly.
Can you repeat her question?
She's asked me a question about liquor laws, and whether restaurants, you know, who's qualified for them in the county. There's a lot of debate on whether it's an owner, or you have to have a lawyer hold the license. So I'm going to let this gentleman respond to that.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jeff Thompson. I'm at Thompson &amp; Richard, and I've been the county's liquor board attorney for, I don't know, 30 years. Around as long as Mr. Davis, I believe. And the question is, just relative to who can obtain a liquor license?
Relative to, is there something that is keeping this area from having a chain restaurant that serves liquor in this area?
Okay.
Will it be in Easton or Annapolis?
No. Good, yeah, good question. Liquor licenses aren't so much site-specific or site-design specific as they are applicant-specific. So in Queen Anne's County, a restaurant license is classified as a Class B license. And then you have a Class B beer, a Class B beer and wine, and a Class B beer, wine, and liquor. To obtain a Class B license in Queen Anne's County, if you're an individual, you must have been a resident of Queen Anne's County for a two-year period. And at least one of those applicants needs to be a registered voter. If you're coming in as a corporate license holder, LLC or corporate license holder, you don't have to be a resident of the state of Maryland. But three of the officers have to be applicants, if there are three officers. If there are less than three officers, it can be as few as one. That one person has to be a resident of the state of Maryland and own at least 15% of the outstanding shares of stock in the company. So the problem with a national chain is, very difficult to find a national chain where you would have an officer be a resident of the state of Maryland and the owner of 15% of the outstanding shares of stock. That's, that's the dilemma for your national chain.
I see the problem with the liquor laws.
What? I'm not a politician, I'm just... If, if however, let's just say if however, the restaurant that is sought to locate there is a franchise, then you could very easily have a resident of the state of Maryland, a resident of Queen Anne's County, you know, be an officer and own the 15%. So the issue really becomes the ownership of the actual restaurant itself. Is it a franchise where you could actually have, you know, Thompson LLC own it and therefore I could be the, the actual applicant and I could own those number of shares, or is it truly a national chain where it's company-owned? It's the company-owned that's gonna...
You know, things like that.
Don't know enough about those companies to know whether they're franchised or not. So again, if, if, I'm sure you can look, if it's a company that sells franchises, then yes, a local owner could obtain a franchise and get a liquor license. Yes, ma'am.
Are you also saying that Queen Anne County though, has different laws in that regard to the ownership and residents?
It's so, it's so selective. Every single county, there's a general rule, and then pretty much every county has its only, own nuances. Every single county is different. Special interest groups over the last whatever number of years have carved out what they felt they needed. And yet, but yes, your question over the 15% ownership, Queen Anne's County, it's a special provision for Queen Anne's County. Other counties might have greater ownership, lesser ownership, none, but you have to look up each individual one.
So in order to change that, we would have to...
It would be a legis, it would be, it would be a legislative change, yes. And our delegation typically would have me draft up something, present it to the local liquor board, the liquor board would have a public hearing, everyone would have the opportunity to be heard on the point. Our liquor board would make a recommendation to the county commissioners, they too then would have a hearing, you know, to fully vet the issue, and only after those two hearings would the delegation, you know, accept, I guess, a recommendation to make a change.
So you want the work on the project?
That's, that's, and we, it's, it's done every year. If someone wants to propose it, be more than happy to present it to the liquor board and start that process. But it ends with your delegation, it ends with your local, your local delegates and your senator.
Any other questions on liquor, beer?
Thanks for the question, I feel like it came for a reason.
Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions concerning the project? Good, well, I'll take some, got a couple minutes, I'll take some freestanding questions if you like. I actually have another commissioner room I wanna recognize, Commissioner Wilson, so, you know, if he'd like to come up as well and say a couple things, if he wants to, speak about the project, any questions you may have for the two of us, feel free, this is your opportunity. Yes, ma'am.
I do have one question. How many people will they be employed?
That's a good question. Actually, Denny's, Denny's has about 1,600 operations in the United States, and they're one of the largest employers when it comes to mid-sized restaurants. So I would say with three shifts, they're about 75 to 100 employees. Yeah, and they're pretty decent jobs too, so, you know, not everybody goes to college. So this is, you know, managers there make six figures a year, their assistant managers, their chefs, their dishwashers make $14 an hour. Denny's is a really good company to work for, so, you know, I'd like to see this happen. I think it's gonna help out our community tremendously in Graysonville as well as Queen Anne's County. But what I'd like to hear is, or have an input is, you know, we really don't have an association per se on how construction's done, other than the planning and zoning. So if anybody has concerns on how that project's gonna look, they need to contact planning and zoning and try to keep, you know, continuity, let's, you know, be consistent throughout, so. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
Denny has presented, Jeff, have they made any kind of commitment for percentages of maybe management that would come from the county? Or are there been any economic development funds that were given out to...
No, there's, no discussion with Denny's about economic development funds whatsoever, no. And I assume they're gonna hire who they choose to hire, but our economic development departments here are ahead, and there's a couple of members here along with yourself. I mean, that's some recommendations that we can obviously work through and when we get to that point, talk to them. Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
The developers that we're working with, the Denny's, they're one of the biggest developers in the US. They own, right now, currently they own about maybe 25 Denny's and they're developing a bunch of them, and they have incentive to develop more around the Maryland area. And this site, he likes very much because he grew up here. The general manager who runs the Denny's, for the owner, he's from Graysonville originally, so he likes this area. We've talked to so many people regarding restaurants. We've approached every single restaurant, they just feel there's not enough heads in Graysonville to sustain year-round business. We've run the hotel for 10 years, we know that. In the wintertime, it is tough to make, pay the bills. The restaurants feel the same way too, but if you look at what's happening at the Cracker Barrel, happening, what's happening in Eastern, everybody from Graysonville is filling all those restaurants in Eastern. Try getting in Chick-fil-A or any other restaurants on 50 up there, and you'll be waiting an hour most of the time. Why, why not have something in Graysonville?
That's right. That's exactly right. Cracker Barrel's the number one Cracker Barrel in the United States. I mean, that's amazing, you know, just, Denny's could be, potentially be the number one, you know, potentially has that option to do that, and so, it's good, it's good. I think it's gonna be a great project for the community. Yes, ma'am.
I probably should've asked Tommy this, but will the facade be typical of Denny's or will the county be requiring modifications in the facade?
I would, I would assume, I don't know, that might be a question for him. Mike, you wanna answer this? Please.
Hi folks, my name's Mike Wisniewski and I'm the director of planning and zoning for Queen Anne's County. To answer that specific question, Mr. Davis did submit the, the new corporate model for Denny's. We've had discussions with him, we want him to take our comments, which were to make it a bit more localized, you know, the eastern shore communities, Queen Anne's County, there's a lot of brick, there's a lot of clapboard siding, there's a lot of material that's more conducive to what we're all used to, so we've asked Tom to contact the architect to sit down and meet with us. It's a process, we're just beginning that process now, but yes, to answer the question, we are looking at different architectural alternatives.
Great, thanks, Mike. Anybody else? No? Yes, sir.
Just a gentleman, thanks about Graysonville.
Sure, shoot, go ahead.
All right, number one, if you're on 18 around the first aisle, you'll block the gray spot there sometimes.
If you're on 18...
30 mile an hour, you don't get it.
Okay.
Another thing is cats, 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 and more damn cats.
Farrah cats.
Anything you want with your cats.
Right, yes, sir.
This is a breed, you see, it's now, it's got approximately nine around my house, and not mine.
I understand. I'll tell you what I'll do, after this meeting...
Do it, and I do not want to kill them.
Absolutely, please don't. But after this meeting, I'll take the time to talk to you and tell you what I think we can do, how's that? Thanks. Did you have, yes, sir.
Well, I was talking about the ditch, the ditches in Graysonville, I'm digging down again.
Okay.
It's best in the big ditch.
Right.
That's in one mine.
Sorry.
It's a girl in the middle. I don't know the name, but I think it's, it's here to Winchester Bridge.
Okay, that used to be an old tax ditch, but go ahead.
That leaves being dug out.
Okay, I'm taking notes, I have somebody in the audience doing this, and I'll, I'll look into that. Absolutely.
Actually, that last point on ditches, drainage ditches along the side of the road, that continues on down into, into Chester on Route 18.
Right.
They, behind the Kent Town Shopping Center, that backs up often, and you get a huge puddle out into Route 18. Then when you go around the curve by Postal Road, the state is not cleaning out those ditches and putting, leaving a lot of water on the road every time you get a heavy rain.
Okay.
So how does the county push the button at the state highway administration to make sure that they do some, take a look at that and do something about it?
That's a good question, and I tell you what, as soon as I find out the answer, I'll get back to you with that.
I will give you my two cents on that because I'm on Dominion and 18, and because one road is county and the other road is state, they both passed the buck.
Right.
And so I just became such an annoyance to them, saying someone has to take ownership, because what happened is they did a new home, they cut through the pipe, and didn't, and then didn't put it back together, so there was no place for the, for the drain off to go, but both were blaming the other one. And I finally got state to come out and take care of on 552, but it really just took, you know, someone has to take...
Okay.
Because I took pictures and I just...
Right. Well, what I'll do is, Ann's taking notes today, and I'll go back to Greg Todd Demar also about what you had talked about, so I'll get some responses and, you know, after the meeting, I'll get your card, get your number, and then I'll, I'll let you know. How's that? Anybody else? Any free-for-all questions you wanna ask, anything about the county? Other than that, I'm gonna say thank you for joining us this evening, and, yes.
The other places, maybe that ours, American Tino, we lost that wonderfully nice restaurant that was county-friendly and kid-friendly to the second McDonald's that...
Right.
For the tourists, maybe ours, American Tino.
Maybe so. My next town hall meeting's gonna be in May, and it's gonna be about the, the prime outlets, Demal Property. You know, that's a property I've been working with him for the last, I wanna say, year, myself and Mike, since he's been on board. I just spoke with him last week and, you know, we're gonna, he's gonna vamp this thing up again, so I wanna do a, gonna give him a couple of months to put together a really nice presentation on what the proposal is for the, the prime outlets. I mean, that has the potential to be one of the biggest redevelopment projects the county's seen, and, you know, they're talking about movie theaters and different type of stuff, so we'll, we'll give you plenty of notice, faith will get it out to people, and we'll go from there. But other than that, I wanna thank you for coming out this evening to talk about the Denny's project. If you have any questions or concerns, call me and I'll get back to you, thank you.